All right. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for attending today's March 2024 hearing of the Oldham County Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Greg King, Chair. If everyone will please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And if everyone would please take those electronics and mute them or turn them off for the duration of the hearing, so as not to interfere with. First order of business is approval of minutes from the February hearing. Can we go ahead and get a motion on the floor? Ms. Jones, was that you?
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Right. Any changes, edits? Ms. Jones?
Just a couple little things. The date says Wednesday, February 27?
Ah, good eyes.
And also, were we really done by 10:00 a.m.? I mean, I know it was a quick one, but was it that quick?
I think it was a pretty rapid hearing there last month.
Okay. That's all I get.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, being none others, then we will go ahead and get a motion, or excuse me, a vote, a voice vote to approve as adjusted by Ms. Jones's recommendations there. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. And minutes are approved. Okay, first docket. Kristi, will you read the first docket item, please?
No.
Oh, let's go ahead and get staff sworn. Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, you're up.
Docket PZ24-003. An application has been filed by Sycamore Run Investments LLC for the approval of a preliminary subdivision plan to revise Section 2 and create a new Section 3 for single-family lots on approximately 28.4 acres adjacent to the existing Sycamore Run subdivision. The property is located at 2090 West Highway 42, La Grange. The zoning is R1 Residential District, AG1 Agriculture Residential District, and CO1 Conservation Residential District.
All right, Ms. Edger, Mr. Vogel, you'll have staff's presentation?
Yes. Good morning. Brian Vogel, Assistant Director, Oldham County Planning and Development Services. Notification for today's public hearing was provided on the county's website the 1st of March. Joining property owner notices were mailed out on March 6, and a legal advertisement appeared in the Oldham area newspaper on March 7. Just to quickly orient the commission where we're located at, this is off of Smith Lane in the Highway 42 area. Right here on this aerial is the intersection of Highway 53 and 42, north of La Grange. And if you come up 42, turn on to Smith Lane. This is the entrance to the subdivision, the existing subdivision here. So this is in addition to the existing Sycamore Run subdivision. So the intersection with Sycamore Run Road is right here. Smith Lane, intersection of Sycamore Ridge Road is right here. And the proposal is to extend Sycamore Ridge here onto this adjacent property, which already has an approved preliminary plan from you guys. We'll go over when we get into the site history. But what's changed here is that they've acquired an adjacent 28 acres located approximately here that they would like to incorporate into what's been approved before. And then highlighted in red here are the parcels that we're talking about. So this parcel and this parcel have an approved preliminary plan on it that you guys heard in 2021. And what they're proposing to do is to amend that plan and then incorporate this adjacent 28 acres into the subdivision. A few photos, this is the intersection of Sycamore Ridge and Sycamore Run Roads. Right here, this is Sycamore Ridge, where it would be extended into the new portions of the subdivision. You can see they're doing some excavating work on this photo and some other photos, which is okay. They don't have the cart before the horse here because they already have an approved preliminary plan and the construction plans for the existing Sycamore Ridge, but then they're proposing to change that. Here's a photo of the proposed entrance onto Highway 42. This is looking out 42 back towards Highway 53 in the La Grange area. And this would be looking out 42 going out towards Lesbury in Henry County. The zoning in the area is, Ms. Edger, red, is a combination of conservation residential, agricultural residential, and then a strip here along Highway 42 is R1 residential. So this subdivision has a history going back about 24 years. In July of 2000, the planning commission approved a preliminary plan that created Sycamore Run subdivision on approximately 270 acres. In April of 2002, the staff approved the first section of Sycamore Run with 43 single-family lots. In September 2005, the staff approved a second record plat with 21 single-family lots. And then in April 2007, staff approved a record plat with 39 lots. And the approval of those record plats have to comply with what you all approved with the preliminary plan in July of 2000. So what we basically have before us now is that in February, I jumped ahead, in February 2021, you guys approved the new section of Sycamore Run subdivision, which is what they're wanting to amend now and then incorporate the 28 acres into that. So in January of this year, the applicants had a neighborhood meeting with the neighbors with their proposal. And then the applicants were before the technical review committee, which is the necessary step before they come to you all in February. And they were provided technical comments that we'll go over. And those were included in your staff report. So the requested plan is basically to revise what was approved in February 2021 and then incorporate the adjacent 28 acres into the subdivision, resulting in a total of 93 single-family residential lots and two open space lots on approximately 171 acres. A lot of times, a picture is worth a thousand words, and I think that's probably the case right here. So what you have highlighted in green are roughly the 28 acres that they're wanting to incorporate into the new subdivision plan. And then what you see here is the new subdivision plan, and I'll let the applicants explain how they've changed that from what was approved previously. And this is just a picture of what was approved previously, where they were going to extend Sycamore Ridge, have their street network here, and then come out into this entrance onto 42. And the adjacent 28 acres that's now part of this plan now, basically this corner right here. So the applicants did appear before the technical review committee on February 21. The Kentucky Transportation Cabinet provided us written comments asking that lots 195, 196, 197, and 197, which directly front on Highway 42 and don't have access to any of the internal subdivision streets, be restricted to two entrances total on 42. And this is lots 195, 196, 197, and 198. The other lot that has frontage along 42 does have access to the internal street right here. Okay, the Oldham County Board of Education was at the technical review committee, and they established a school capacity number of 22 building permits per year. And that basically concludes the planning staff's presentation of the request. And again, just to summarize, it's a proposal to revise a previously approved preliminary plat and then incorporate an adjacent 28 acres into the subdivision, resulting in 93 single-family lots on 171 acres. And with that, that concludes the planning staff's presentation. And the county engineer may have some comments.
Mr. Siliman?
Good morning. Jim Siliman, Oldham County Engineer, 100 West Jefferson Street. If you read our TRC comments from the engineering department or watched the YouTube video of the technical review committee, then this is going to be a little bit redundant. But for those who haven't seen that in the audience, we'll repeat it anyway. As Brian mentioned, the Section 2B, back in February, we did approve construction plans for that section of this subdivision, so they are working on that. We approved those, having received the Army Corps of Engineers jurisdictional determination, Division of Water permitting, and other permitting that we were waiting from other agencies. We would just note that there, with the future sections, if any other impacts to those jurisdictional waters or jurisdictional waters are necessary, that they'll update or coordinate appropriately with those agencies. If you look on the plan here, let's see, they show a detention basin in the jurisdictional stream. Again, that has been approved with the permitting they've already gotten. Brian also mentioned about the ingress and egress to the state right-of-way, and he mentioned the need to have shared driveways here. One thing, I believe the applicant is aware of or should be aware of is that Oldham County requires 10, two 10- and 100-year storm analysis. The state may require a 25-year storm analysis for any discharge to their right-of-way. That's just a supplemental measure that they require permitting. For any future sections, because there will be more than an acre of land disturbance, obviously, they'll be required to get the Stormwater Quality Management and Erosion Control Permit from our office, which would require they design the plans in accordance with our construction site runoff ordinance. In the plans here, it actually states that that's in accordance with the subdivision regulations. For clarity and for your all's awareness, that's actually the runoff ordinance through the engineering department. They would also be required to get or update their Kentucky Division of Water KYR-10 permit for that disturbance over an acre. I think one other comment, just again, kind of specifics if you're reading this, it mentions that outlets would be designed with flow velocity. Let's see, where is... Well, basically, it says with flow velocities less than 6 Fps. It'd actually be, they will provide actually specific drainage calculation for all those. It's not just based on a general single-unit criteria. We do get a little bit more specific than that. And then it mentions the Worthington Fire Department. It's actually La Grange Fire Department. So with that, that's all the comments I had.
Thank you. Mr. Siliman, commission, questions for staff? Very nicely done, staff. Okay, so we'll move into presentation from applicant.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good morning. Mike Swansburg with law firm Swansburg &amp; Smith, located at 117 West Main Street here in La Grange. I have the pleasure of representing the Sycamore Development ownership this morning. And quite frankly, I'm not going to do a whole lot of talking about this project. Brian did an excellent job setting the stage for this. I also have with me Clay Jones, who is the developer and owner of the property. Mr. Chairman, if we need to have him sworn in at this point as well?
Let's go ahead and do that, thanks.
Ted Bernstein, the engineer, who may also speak on that front, may also be sworn in at that point.
Do you solemnly swear to tell...? Raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
And like I said, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm not going to do a whole lot in terms of presenting myself. This is a, the developer's got a great presentation and has already made this pitch in front of the technical review committee and the engineer, being able to address a lot of the specific questions. I do want to point out specifically, though, just for everyone's benefit, of course, in terms of the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan, this particular measure does comport with land use objective LU-1-2, which is related to managing development in areas of environmental concern or limited development potential associated with soil and slope conditions. And Mr. Jones will get up and talk to you about why this new addition is actually a great thing for that purpose in terms of environmental concerns. But I do want to highlight that. In addition to objective land use-2-1, which talks about establishing neighborhood development guidelines that promote connectivity between neighborhoods, encourage integration of community and civic facilities, and address issues of neighborhood identity and compatibility with adjacent development. And that's what we're talking about here, is continuing an existing development that has already been approved by this body. And the reasons for that, of course, will become more apparent when Mr. Jones and Mr. Bernstein get up and talk about the benefits of this new addition and why ultimately it will be a great addition for this particular property. So with that, Mr. Chairman, unless you all have any specific questions of me, I'm going to go ahead and sit down and let Mr. Jones and Mr. Bernstein give the remainder of our presentation at this time. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Morning.
Morning.
Get my laptop fired up here real quick.
Let's go ahead and get your name and address for the record, please.
Clay Jones, 7506 Jones Trace in Crestwood. Give me one second here. There we go. All right, what you have on your screen here are the, as Brian stated, the two sections, Section 2B and 3, that have previously been approved.
A little closer to that mic, sir. Thank you.
Sections 2B and 3, which were previously approved by the commission. Section 2B, which we are, just started working on a couple weeks ago, in the yellow. And then Section 3, which on my screen is gray, it's kind of a dark white up on your screen potentially. But, and then, of course, the 28 acres, if I can get my mouse to work here. Is it showing on your screen? No? Okay. Well, this 28 acres down at the bottom right-hand corner that's in the thin green line, almost looks like it was meant to be part of the development. And maybe it was originally part of the farm years and years ago. But between Section 2B and 3, and I don't know why my mouse won't work here, but it makes it somewhat more difficult, but the connector road between 2B and 3, if you see that right kind of in the... Yeah, my pad doesn't work very well. Yeah, still not, still not doing it. But if you can see that connector road between 2B and 3, right behind where the 28 acres is, currently approved that we had planned to build until this 28 acres became available, and it provided us another solution on how to get back to Section 3. And the reason we wanted another solution is because that connector road goes behind... Will that work? Okay.
Let's give that a try.
Yeah.
Old school with wires and everything.
Thanks, sir. Oh, wait a minute. It was there.
All right. Keep making it appear.
It's working on my screen. I apologize. I don't, I don't know why. Well, we'll go on. But so, talking about the connector road between Sections 2B and 3, crossing a deep ravine. Actually, this next slide, which is somewhat confusing, you still see the 28 acres there highlighted in the thin green line, and Section 2B and 3 surrounding that. And I use this as a topo map laid out over the top of a satellite image. And you can see in some areas where the topo lines are very far apart, and that means relatively flat ground. Well, the upper left-hand corner, where it's basically just a maroon blob, that's the ravine that we have to cross to get between Section 2B and 3. Very deep hole in the ground essentially, with a, partially has an intermittent blue line and an ephemeral stream that goes through it. So our intent with the 28 acres is to do this. The original road kind of connected those two cul-de-sacs that you see, and you can see a thin red line. That's the intermittent blue line and the ephemeral stream that we have to cross over the top of that valley. It would put that stream in probably 100 to 150 feet of culvert pipe and bury the valley 15 to 25 feet deep, depending upon the location. It gets real steep right at the very bottom. So our intent is to move the road that connects 2B and 3 up to the ridge top, which is, you can't see numbers there, but you see the new connector road that comes back around in, you know, through the 28 acres, through the green outlined area, and connects to Section 3. And that moves the road to all ridge top, which is where we'd much prefer to have it, not only for environmental reasons, but it's much less money to build the road as well. And so it keeps the roads at the top of the ridge. It also keeps the houses at the top of the ridge. And then the backyards of the houses just fall back in the valleys, which would remain primarily undisturbed. And so within the 28 acres, we have, on the connector road between 2B and 3, we have 13 lots at the top of the hill. And then, as Brian mentioned earlier, we have the four lots down on Highway 42. And we made those, they're all, they average two acres. They're deeper, larger lots than obviously the requirement of one acre. And we did that intentionally because they're on Highway 42. We had another design that our engineers came up with initially, which actually gave us three additional lots, which you can see the cul-de-sac dropping down towards 42. And that was great because it was better for our bottom line. But the four lots that are down on 42, the backs of the houses would face the road. And to help preserve the character of 42 in what you see now, we thought best to go with this design, where the fronts of the houses will face 42. It's all wooded through there, too, so the homes will kind of sit back in the trees. And again, we kind of feel like that does a better job preserving the existing character along 42. And that's basically the whole thing. You know, feel it's pretty straightforward. I think it makes a lot of sense for what we're doing, you know, in a development sense, and to protect the environment and stay out of that valley and out of that ephemeral stream and intermittent blue line stream. And that's pretty much the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Swansburg, anything to add? Fair enough.
No, sir. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to testimony and question by those opposing the application. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none? All right, we'll move into questions from commission. Commissioners, who has questions? Mr. Finney?
I have a question for Mr. Jones. These four lots that are fronting on 42, are they individually have driveways on 42?
They will, but they actually have, there's four lots, and currently there are two approved entrances, so they'll share a driveway and entrance out onto 42 between two lots. So four lots, two entrances.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Finney? All right, anyone else? Mr. Douglas?
The portion that they're sharing those driveways, will they need a mutual agreement or maintenance agreement for that? Or will that be considered accounting?
Yes. We always have a shared access and maintenance agreement. That needs to be filed when those lots are put to record or when they're sold.
Yeah, my thoughts on that, too, is it would probably be just like the last 30 feet, the driveways would come together at that point, so it wouldn't be too much, but would be necessary.
One other question I had was on, there was two lots that seemed to be approaching or encroaching an intermittent stream, and I didn't ask the county engineer, but appears to be lot, I think it's 147 and lot 146. Not sure if your engineer might be able to explain that. It looks like one of them's one acre. It looks like one of them's one acre, 1.17 acre on lot 147, and one acre on 146. What disturbance, will there be any disturbance made to that stream? Are you concerned about stormwater or flooding near the proposed residential structure? Because it looks like it's running right through the middle of the property line.
Yeah, and I see what you're saying. And I'm, I'm not entirely sure how to ask that question. We haven't done any engineering or design on that yet. And I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe this plan changes any, anything that was previously approved in relation to those lots back there. But without an engineer's design on it, I'm not really sure how to properly answer that.
Eric Sen, Land Design Development, 503 Washtere Avenue. Once we get into the detailed design of those roadways, we'll look at the placement of the houses on those two lots, and if we have to get a permit to fill a portion of those lots to build out pads, we will.
Does that suffice for you?
So that's an interesting stream because when we looked at the USGS map, that's actually not mapped as a blue line.
I know.
But I think when they did, when you all performed your permitting with the Corps of Engineers and had your consultant do the jurisdictional determination, it then came up as a stream, so it's, it's kind of on the borderline. But with regard to your question about placement of house, I think what Eric Sen said is correct in that we typically, when it comes through the building permit stage, not even at construction plan review, but when we're providing an encroachment permit and working with our building inspection department, we'll check with the Army Corps of Engineers and make sure it falls within their nationwide permitting criteria.
Thank you for your clarification.
Anything additional, Mr. Douglas? Mr. Marsh?
Maybe this is a question for staff, but have Oldham County Emergency Services reviewed the addition here? I didn't see anything.
In what regard? Just for addressing or?
Additional load on their ability to access, like water for the fire department, those type things that we've reviewed.
Yeah. At the Technical Review Committee, LaGrange Fire Department was in attendance.
Was involved? Okay.
I don't believe that the police department was there or the ambulance.
Ambulance.
Yes, but they, they were notified in terms of the, they were given notice of the Technical Review Committee meeting.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. For the questions. All right, seeing none. Since we do not have opposition testimony, we will not have rebuttal. Mr. Swansburg, anything from your end for a final statement?
Mr. Chairman, nothing to add, other than, again, appreciate everyone's time and appreciate all the questions. And to the extent there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll sit down and let you all continue with your business.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Again, this is an application for a preliminary subdivision plan with a revision to Section 2, and also creating a new Section 3. As always, in your staff report, and this one's on page four, there are suggested motions for either approval or denial. I always tell you to remember to, if you're, whatever motion you're going to make, that you include, that you've heard evidence and testimony. You can also include language about compliance with the comprehensive plan or the subdivision regulations. If you choose to go ahead and consider approving the preliminary subdivision plan, there are four suggested conditions of approval. The first is that there shall be no significant changes to the Sycamore Run Preliminary Subdivision Plan as presented at the March 26, 2024 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing, without review and approval of the commission. The second is that driveway access to lots 195, 196, 197, and 198 shall be limited to two total driveway entrances onto Highway 42, as noted on the Sycamore Run Preliminary Subdivision Plan. And I'm going to add that a shared access and maintenance agreement must be included in the sale of the lots. Number three is that the issuance of building permits for single-family residents shall be limited to 22 per calendar year in compliance with the school capacity standard determined by the Oldham County Board of Education. And the fourth one is that Sycamore Run Preliminary Subdivision Plan and construction plans must comply with all established federal, state, and local ordinances and requirements at the time of the approval of the record plat. And the record plat will not be approved until all standards are satisfied.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Urban. Commissioners, your turn. Time to put a motion on the floor. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision plan. Ms. Nassar?
All right. I would like to make a motion to approve docket PZ-24003. Based on the testimony and evidence presented, I feel it does comply with the objections of the comprehensive plan to revise the previously approved Section 2 subdivision plan and to incorporate the 28 acres with 17 single-family residence units due to the fact it works within the adjacent development that is existing there and is the best use of the land on a, for the topographic conditions that are there. I also include that it shall include the binding elements that have been stated by Jim Urban.
Thank you, Ms. Nassar.
Second.
You good?
I'm good.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Any discussion before we move into roll call vote? All right. Please.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss?
Yes.
Ms. Nassar?
Yes.
Ms. Walzer?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
And the motion carries for an approval of PZ-24-003. Everybody good?
Yep.
Guys good? Roll on to the next docket.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it, Brian.
All right. You read the next docket item.
Docket PZ-24004. Application has been filed by Baptist Health for approval of a program for signs, Section 290-140 of the Oldham County Zoning Ordinance for property located at 1051 New Moody Lane, LaGrange, to allow the installation of signage at the under-construction pharmacy services building. The property is zoned R4 residential district.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And Mr. Fogel, you have staff presentation?
Yes. Brian Fogel, Assistant Director, Oldham County Planning Development Services. Similar to our prior case, notification for today's hearing was provided on the 1st of March on the county's website. Joining property owner notices were made on the 6th of March, and a legal advertisement appeared in the Oldham area newspaper on March 7. I think everyone probably knows where the, the hospital is here in LaGrange, but just real quickly, the LaGrange exit right here, the hospital is located right here, Walmart is right here, New Moody Lane, and the under-construction pharmacy building is right here. This photo's a little bit dated. We'll show you a few photos that show the actual building. And the actual building is being constructed in this area right here with the existing healthcare campus right here. The parcel highlighted in red is the property that's under consideration for the program for signs. This is a site plan that was submitted with the application, showing the footprint of the building that's under construction right here. Walmart located right there, the hospital campus is located right here. And then just a few photos. This is, the pharmacy building has its own entrance onto New Moody Lane instead of just having to cut through the parking lots of the, of the healthcare campus. So this is the new entrance that's been constructed onto New Moody Lane. This is the drive that comes up from New Moody Lane. This is when you get to the building that's under construction right here. You'll see there's a fork in the, the drive here. This fork here leads to the back of the building. This fork here leads to the parking and the front of the building. Just an image of the side of the building, image of the front of the building, and then just one more of the front of the building showing it in relation to the healthcare campus. The zoning on the property is R4, which is high-density residential, which may seem a little bit odd that we're talking about a healthcare campus. But basically, hospitals and uses similar to that are allowed in most any zoning district in the county. It just happens that with this particular one with the R4, way back when, the, the hospital had to go get approval with a conditional use from the LaGrange Board of Adjustments. And that way back when would have been in November of 1991, where the Oldham County Fiscal Court and LaGrange City Council were forwarded a recommendation by the Planning Commission to change the zoning on the property to R4. And, and then, I'm, I'm going to just give a real quick Reader's Digest thing from November 1981 to December 2012, because in looking at the, the review history, we could go over about a dozen things, all related to construction at the hospital, and about half of those are all variances for signs, which is how our regulation used to be written, that it was very restrictive on the sign till in 2008, you all amended the zoning ordinance to create this vehicle called a program for signs, which is what the hospital did in December of 2012. They came to you all with the program for signs to say, well, we've got this hospital, we've got all these medical office complexes out there, we need a comprehensive sign package, which is what you all granted to the healthcare campus in December 2012. And it's similar to the request that you have before you today, specifically geared towards the fact that there's a new building out there with the Pharmacy Services Center. So in November 22, the Technical Review Committee accepted technical comments regarding the construction of the Pharmacy Services Building. In December 2022, the one part of the ordinance that hasn't changed, the applicant still had to go to the LaGrange Board of Adjustments and get a conditional use to allow the construction of the Pharmacy Services Building as part of the healthcare campus. And then in March of last year, the Planning Commission administratively approved a landscape and lighting plan for the, for the site. So in terms of what the program for signs are, it's, it's a creative incentive to create a unified visual statement for a more complex use than just a simple storefront. It's applicable to any use where you may have multiple tenants, like in a shopping center, or in this particular case, you've got a healthcare campus with multiple types of uses. The program for signs specifies that the applicant has to provide you all with a visual representation of what they're proposing, and that when you all approve a program for signs, it basically supersedes any other sign regulation requirements in the zoning ordinance. So in terms of what's being requested, we'll go through the signs here and show them to you and where the locations are, but basically, they're proposing 10 signs. The first one is a single standing, freestanding monument sign located at that entrance that you saw a photo of. This is an image of what that sign would look like, basically identifying the fact that that particular entrance onto New Moody Lane is the entrance to the Pharmacy Services Center. They're proposing two identification wall signs on the building, one that's on the side of the building, and one that's on the front of the building. So this is the one that's proposed on the front of the building with the graphics showing what it would say. And this is the one that's proposed on the side of the building right here, and similar to the front one, basically the same graphics, where it identifies it as a Baptist Health facility. Okay. Five identification signs on the back of the building that basically are just over each of the overhead doors for delivery, so I'm assuming the driver would know that they're supposed to go to door 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5 to make their deliveries. A single freestanding sign at that fork in the road, letting drivers know, do you either want to go to the delivery area in the rear of the building, or do you want to veer off to the left and go to the, the front of the building? And then the last thing is just a decal sign on the front door, which is represented right So the, the commission's standards for approval with the program for signs are basically, it has to be consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance. It has to be compatible with the theme and visual, visual quality of the overall campus, and that the representation of what they're proposing has to be appropriately sized for what they're constructing. And to the right, or your left of the screen that's highlighted in yellow, is the portion of the zoning ordinance that shows you the part of the zoning ordinance that addresses program for signs. And what's highlighted in yellow is basically just saying, hey, these are the standards that you guys use when you consider an approval for a program for sign. And I'm going the wrong way? There we go. So in summary, you know, basically, it's a, a request to install 10 separate identification signs on the Pharmacy Services Building that's under construction, will be open later this year at the Baptist Healthcare Campus. And that, that concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Fogel. Mr. Solomon, anything on this one? Thank you. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Fogel? Mr. Douglas?
Who determines the line of sight placement of the street sign on New Moody Lane? Is there a certain engineering that?
Yes. There's a, a portion in our zoning ordinance when the actual sign permits are issued, where they have to maintain the clear sight triangle to ensure that there's not a conflict with cars trying to pull out of the, of the drive.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas? All right, anyone else? Questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Fogel. We'll move into presentation from applicant, Mr. Talbot. If you guys want, we'll go ahead and get you sworn in before we get underway.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can sit down for just a moment. John Talbot, Barden Whopper Talbot Roberts. My address is 1,000 North Hurstborn Parkway, Louisville, Kentucky, 40223. Mr. Chair, fellow members of the commission, I'm here on behalf of Baptist Health for this program of signs. With me, I have Samantha Forrester from Patterson Group. She is here with the signs, and she'll be able to answer any technical questions you all have. Mr. Fogel, thank you for that, that preliminary review of what our request is for. I thought you did a good job and made my job a lot easier. The thing I found really interesting is the history on that regulation. It's an excellent regulation. It, it makes the process much simpler, and it doesn't simplify to the extent that it really denigrates anything. It gives you a lot more discretion, really, to do what makes sense, which in this case is to make the signs consistent with this campus. And so it really gives a unified presence, and we don't have to come back 10 times in time after time. You will also noted from Brian's presentation that we have basically three main signs that we'll show you pictures of. One is the monument sign out by the road. Two are the building signs that are on the building itself, similar to what's on the hospital now. And the rest are really just interior directional signs. One is even so, we're getting so far down in the weeds, one is even just a little tiny sign actually on a glass door that people will walk through. So it's really nothing. But the main signs are those three that I just mentioned. This shows the overall site. The, the site in orange, that's the pharmacy site. And again, this is also similar to Brian's picture. This is, was, has a little bit of date on, and age on this picture. They've actually gone vertical with that building. I mean, they're working on the interior of the building now. I mean, they're working on the interior of the building now. If you drove down there, the entire complex is pretty much built out with roads, and there's trucks and semis already pulling up to some of these gates as they continue to finish the inside. The blue part shows the rest of the campus with the hospital, and then the part where our road would actually go to New Moody Lane. This slide shows the hospital as it currently is, and this has two renditions of what the monument signs look like. When you see our monument signs, they're not identical, but they are nearly identical. They're very similar, and the idea is to have a lot of consistency and also show Baptist Health's new logo and brand. This shows the two signs that are actually on the hospital building. And again, you'll see these will be very similar to the two signs that are on the pharmacy building that we'll be building. This demonstrates exactly where the signs are. I know it's a little bit small and probably somewhat hard to read, but that one up top, that is where our monument sign will actually go, next to New Moody Lane. And here is our monument sign. Again, you'll notice it's very similar to the one that I showed you that's on the hospital campus. This has, each one will have 19 square feet, and we've got all the details that have been filed in our application, but the size is gonna be very similar to what is currently out front of the hospital. This shows some interior signs. This is the larger ones that'll go on the building itself, and that's the rendition. The top part, top left, shows the sign that has the logo, looks like the colored flower, and then the words Baptist Health. And then the two pictures below it actually show the building, the sides that it will be facing. I think it's north and west, but my directions may be a little bit off, but effectively, one side is gonna be facing towards the hospital, and then another side will be facing out towards New Moody Lane. So that's the front one. The next sign, this is a directional sign. Again, it's circled in the middle to let people know where they're going inside of the, this part of the campus, and that's the directional sign. I didn't have any pictures from the hospital, but if I did, this also mimics the directional signs that are at the hospital itself. And then lastly, I've got the large circle. This was the last one that, actually, the second to the last one Brian showed you. This shows the numbers over the bays, simply to let the trucks and semis know which bay they're to pull up to. This doesn't have any logo or anything like that. It's simply to let people know the number, very small signs. And then lastly, this is the one for the door. And again, those are just two glass doors, and the sign is very, very small, so pretty much about the size of your fist on that door. That's it. That's the extent of our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you have. And again, we have Ms. Forrester here to answer any technical questions if you want to get into the detail of the size itself. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of this application? All right. And anyone wishing to speak or ask questions in regard to opposition to this application? Being none, all right, we'll move into questions from the commission. Commissioners, questions? None of that, all right? Without opposition testimony, we'll skip rebuttal. Mr. Talbot, don't go far. Final statement, if any?
Very quickly, we think this is very much consistent with the purpose of this zoning ordinance, and that is to have consistency on a campus exactly like we're presenting here today. We provided all the information that you need on lettering size, color, and all of those things that were in the regulation. And it will accomplish the mission of having a unified visual statement, and it's compatible with the surrounding areas. So we do ask that you all vote for approval of this, and again, we thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Mr. Urban?
On page four in your staff report, you have suggested motions for either approval or denial of the Baptist Healthcare Program for Signs. I don't think you have to individually list all the signs. You've heard testimony, not only from staff, but also from the applicant, what the signs are. Essentially, you're gonna include this in your decision, that this design package is part of the decision. If you choose to consider approving the program for signs, there are a couple of suggested conditions of approval. The first is that there shall be no significant changes to the Baptist Healthcare Program for Signs as presented at the March 26, 2024 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing without review and approval of the commission. And the second is that Baptist Healthcare Program for Signs must comply with all federal, state, and local ordinances and requirements at the time of approval. And that's especially important in consideration of the monument sign and its location in the site triangle, outside the site triangle. As always, you can include, there are, in the suggested motions for either approval or denial, there are some bullet points that you can use as part of your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. All right, commissioners, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move to open the floor for motions. Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Concerning PZ-24-004, I move to approve the Baptist Healthcare Program for Signs because it is consistent with the purposes of Oldham County zoning ordinances. The Baptist Healthcare Program for Signs specifically satisfies the following standards of approval outlined in the Oldham County zoning ordinance. Consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance, compatible with the theme, visual quality, and overall character of the surrounding area, and appropriately related in size, shape, materials, color, illumination, and character to the function and architectural character of the building or premises on which they will be displayed and are compatible with the existing adjacent activities. I suggest we, do I need to read these approvals again, or can we just include them because we did? Is that okay?
You're including in the motion the conditions of...
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Mr. Baxter, do we have an adequate motion on the floor?
Well-reasoned motion. I approve the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Ms. Davis, thank you. We will move into a roll call vote unless there are questions, discussion. Thank you, Ms. Edgar. We'll move into a roll call vote.
Ms. Walser?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar, and the motion to approve PZ-24-004 has been approved on a vote of 12 to 0. All right, everybody still good? Keep moving, okay? Ms. Edgar, can you go ahead and read the next docket?
Docket PZ-24005. An application has been filed by Glen Louisville CDJR LLC for the approval of a zoning map amendment and associated development plan on approximately 7.95 acres located at 6229 and 6235 West Highway 146 Crestwood. The proposed change is for C1 Local Business District to C3 General Business District.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And Mr. Fisher, you'll have staff's presentation?
Yeah. Oh, you're fine? Yeah, you're right. So when it's time, you can switch?
Yeah, somebody, somebody there will switch. All right. Hello. Ryan Fisher, Senior Planner, Oldham County Planning and Development. So as Ms. Edgar stated, this is an application that's been filed by Glen CDJR LLC for the approval of a zoning map amendment and associated development plan on a 7.95 acre parcel located at both 6229 and 6235 West Highway 146 in Crestwood. That property is currently zoned C1, and they are asking for a zoning change recommendation to a C3 General Business District. Parcel ID information, once again, I just sort of told you that, C1 to C3 on 7.95 acres. Little bit of the site history on this is I was looking in the parcel file yesterday, found that on June 27, 1989, a zoning map amendment was brought before the Planning Commission, and that was in docket number 1731 for a zoning change from C1 to C3 for vehicle storage on approximately, at that time, 7.4 acres. That proposal was for trucks from the nearby Ford Truck Plant to be brought there and stored until what they called a piggyback operation that I guess went to dealerships. That motion was ultimately denied. Did not say what the vote was, but it just said that it was denied. So a little bit of that. As far as this case goes and this case history, we did start back with a pre-application meeting back in early January of this year. They had their neighborhood meeting on the 17th of January. We had our TRC hearing on February 21st. Those meeting minutes were included in your staff packet for your reference. And then as far as the Planning Commission case, we did post this to the website on February 29th. Joining property owner notices were mailed on the 5th of March. The public notice appeared in the era on the 7th of March, and we posted the sign to the property on the 12th. Here is the picture shown where we posted the sign on the property. And then here is the property in question, just around Crestwood Station, right across from North Camden Lane. And it's actually both of these parcels. He colored in blue here just the 6229, so just keep in mind, it is all this 6235 parcel as well. Here is your zoning map showing C1. We have R2 property, residential homes here just to the south, and then Crestwood Station right above that, we're Taylor Orthodontics, some office buildings here, and then Southeast Christian over here, just to the north of the property. Our future land use map shows this area as future land use of Bean Commercial. And so the applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment to change that zoning from C1 to C3 on this 7.95 acre tract. The purpose of the C3 General Business District, and this was included, I believe, in your staff packet as well, just a little blurb from C3, is that this is to provide for appropriate locations for a wide variety of businesses, commercial, mass merchant, and miscellaneous service activities, and does not include land uses characterized by extensive warehousing or frequent heavy trucking activity. So the applicant is proposing to develop an automobile conditioning and overflow parking area on two existing parcels. So parcel one is a vacant and undeveloped 6.95 acre parcel, and parcel two being a vacant 1.01 acre parcel. And the proposed development will be used as an extension of the existing Glen dealership located at 6424 Highway 146, and that's less than a mile from the proposed development. Their justification statement was included in your staff packet, but the applicant intends to use the development to store, condition, and prepare vehicles for sale, whether that's to be delivered to a purchaser or to their dealership. They have stated there will be no extensive repairs done at this place or mechanics operating on the site, and the building will only be used to really detail the vehicles and prepare them for sale. But the applicant should be able to give you much more information as to what they really want to do. Here is the proposed development. You were included with a full-size sets of plans for this. And then just a few pictures of the site from just across the street. And looking down 146, this is towards Camden Acres Drive, which is just here on the right. And just another view, looking that direction, back down towards Crestwood Station. And then one is I was coming out of Camden Acres Drive, looking towards the left and where the proposed development will be. So proposed binding elements on this case, the approval applies only to plans presented here at this March 26, 2024 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing. Minor plaid application and survey must be submitted to the staff for review and approval prior to the issuance of any building permits for those two lots. A landscape and lighting plan must be submitted for approval. Shall be no changes to the plan without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission and Engineer's Office, except for landscaping and lighting plans. And the plan must comply with all federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements, and comply with all necessary easement restrictions. So in summary, the applicant's requesting that zoning change from a C1 Local Business District to a C3 General Business District on 7.95 acres there at 6229 and 6235 West Highway 146 in Crestwood. This would be a recommendation to the city of Crestwood, as they are also looking to annex that property into the city of Crestwood, so that will go simultaneously if you all do approve this today, as a recommendation would go to them as well. And the applicant is requesting approval of the corresponding development plan as well. Few things of note is I did include in your staff packet a relatively lengthy letter that was delivered to our office about a week ago. I know I, I think I emailed you all copies of that as well, but I did include it in your staff packet. And that's the only thing I've heard on this case as far as any correspondence from anybody. And I did, hopefully, Christie handed out an updated traffic assessment that was delivered to our office yesterday. There were a few changes that they did provide for us. Jim Sillemen can give you a little bit more detail on that when he comes forward, but I just wanted to make sure you got both of those things. And with that, I will conclude, and...
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Sillemen?
Yes, sir. Jim Sillemen, Oldham County Engineer. Similar to the previous case, some of these items are gonna be a bit redundant from the TRC or Technical Review Committee. However, there has been some supplemental information provided, so we do get some new information. As is usual, since this will disturb greater than an acre of land, the applicant will be required to obtain a KYR-10 Land Disturbance Permit from the State Division of Water, as well as the Stormwater Quality Management and Erosion Control Permit from our office. This will require design in accordance with our post-construction runoff ordinance. We've had discussions with the applicant, and this was mentioned at TRC, with concerns of the entire watershed in this area and the floodplain in general. There are concerns with increasing runoff in this area, and we talked about some measures that could be employed subsequent to the TRC meeting. The engineer and applicant agreed to over detain on this site. So when we review our, the calculations for the stormwater analysis, construction plan review, we'll be looking for an over detention in that basin to assist in this runoff issue. Similarly, the construction plans will design in accordance with our construction site runoff. We also observed that there's a pond immediately downstream of this site, and while, you know, there is sediment that leaves a site during construction, but when it hits a pond, it's very apparent. So we're, we wanna be a little bit more concerned with this situation, this pond. We discussed that with the applicants also, and you'll see on their design, they included, they included this for TRC, was this additional EPSC forbay. We've seen these effective. Actually, the Goshen Library that's under construction utilizes a similar type of forbay. It's a preliminary capture, and it's been effective there. We hope to see it be effective here, too. But we will also review those plans for a robust EPSC plan to protect the, or aid in the capture of sediment. We can't capture it all, but to help reduce what leaves the site. More about stormwater design, the construction plans should include curb around the perimeter. That's in accordance with subdivision regulations, and that's to capture the runoff and get it into the system appropriately, so it stays on site. We would also require the discharge for that basin be 15 feet or greater from the property line. That's for maintenance and other concerns. No new trees within the basin. Again, that's for a maintenance issue. And before we release the erosion control surety, we'll ensure that the basin has a drainage easement around it for future maintenance issues. Speaking of traffic and vehicles, so moving away from stormwater, we'll also ensure, or ask that the applicant ensure that the layout allows for vehicles to negotiate the parking lot appropriately, and they'll also include a pavement section within their plans. This does encroach on the Kentucky Highway 146, so they'll be required to get an encroachment permit from the state. And then we talked about the required, at TRC, we discussed the need for a traffic assessment. The trips generated here don't hit the... The trips generated here don't hit the level that require traffic impact study, but they did meet the traffic assessment criteria. We were provided that traffic assessment from the traffic engineer Friday, and after a cursory review, myself, Jim Urban, and Ryan Fisher spoke to the applicant's attorney and their traffic engineer. There were a couple revisions that were made to that. An update was provided yesterday. Those were primarily, if you look at the historical data they provided, they mentioned a negative one percent growth rate. That seemed to really reflect a negative growth rate based on the pandemic and COVID. But there was more recent traffic impact that seemed to show, or not traffic impact, traffic counts in twenty twenty-four that showed the traffic going back up. So they revised that and showed really a flat growth rate or zero growth rate, not negative. The other item we discussed was with trip distribution. And ultimately, because of what we understand the function of this site is going to be, we're concerned with peak hour trips. And overall, we concur that the peak hour trips should not have a significant impact on the traffic. And because of, again, the use of the property, they can really control the flow in and out of the property. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Silman. All right, Commissioners, questions for either Mr. Fisher or Mr. Silman? Mr. Douglas, is that you?
Question for the staff. I'm confused about C two and C three here. So in all in all, a storage facility or storage of automobiles is categorically fits into C three?
Well, this isn't really storage. They're prepping the cars, so it doesn't fit in auto sales, and it doesn't really fit in storage. There's going to be kind of an in-and-out flow of vehicles as they receive them, condition them, and then bring them to the showroom to deliver to customers. And so there isn't really a, we can't pigeonhole this somewhere other than it fits in the C three in terms of auto sales and display.
And it doesn't fit into C one because it doesn't authorize vehicle wash?
Well, it's not really a vehicle wash like a car wash. And Ryan's getting the book out. I didn't bring it up with me. To C, I don't think it lists, Ryan, that C one you can have.
Correct. Vehicle wash.
Again, this is a little different category because it's not auto sales and it's not a car wash.
Right. And so yesterday, when I went and checked, vehicle storage actually isn't listed as a use in any of our zoning classifications, where it says vehicle storage. And so kind of when we looked at it, is vehicle sales and display sort of fits it a little bit, vehicle wash fits it a little bit, but C one doesn't provide for any of those in commercial. C two does provide for vehicle repair and vehicle washes, but it's not really kind of a car wash solely in of itself. So the one that kind of fit both of those uses was the display of vehicles as far as storage, and then vehicle wash, which are both in the C three. So, but vehicle storage itself isn't a use in anything. And I checked every single one of our, to see if it actually said vehicle storage anywhere, and it does not.
So when the applicant requested assistance from staff on classification, I guess, of zoning, I noticed several places for the applicant mentioning it's only for storage, except for one slip up where it says they were going to do vehicle display and bring customers there to see the vehicles, to sell them.
Well, I don't think that's the intent you need to ask the applicant.
I'm going to.
I think that customers are not coming here, from what our conversations have been, that they're going to the showroom in the existing facility in Crestwood. And they will deliver the vehicles to the customers at their existing dealership.
But if we allow C three, will they be allowed to sell vehicles there in the future?
Well, I'm going to propose that that was not the intent they told us. So I was going to include a couple in the notes that it is not for sale, because then it would change their application, or their actual use of the property, rather, which might be different than just having their own employees there and no visitors. It changes trip generation, it changes the use of the property, the time of the property, maybe even lighting, things like noise. So as we get through this, if we can go through the rest of the proceeding and we get to the discussion, I'll list the potential binding element.
I just was asking staff, is there another zoning that would fit?
There is, in my opinion, there is not. It won't fit in C one, which is currently, it could, we could squeeze it in C two, but it's clearly in C three. So the staff recommendation, without any resistance from the applicant, was C three.
Okay.
And then, is there a little bit of your question? On page two of three in the TRC notes, a question was asked directly to their attorney of, will there be any sales on this lot? And he replied, no, only at the dealership location was his answer. So, and I'll let them obviously answer that question a little bit more, but that was their answer at the TRC.
It's a good line of questioning because it's different. It's not for auto sales.
I appreciate the comments. I'll have questions to them because in their justification statement, it does clarify what they want to do.
Good, Mr. Douglas? Thank you. Anyone else? Questions? Ms. Jones?
Okay, and I'm looking at the neighborhood meeting minutes, and I think that it was stated that there would not be sales done there, but it says here, participant asked if there will be used inventory. Mr. Stahl stated that there would be used cars and that buyers would meet at the showroom and be taken to the off-site inventory if need be. So maybe there will be customers taken there?
I think that's maybe a question to ask.
It's our understanding they won't be, but you can ask clarification of the applicant.
All right, Ms. Jones, anything else?
No.
Anyone else? Questions for staff? All right. Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
And just let me clarify something. When we had a conversation like Jim Silman mentioned yesterday with their traffic consultant and the trips dispersment from the property, if it were auto sales, they would leave the property and go left or right, and the original traffic assessment showed that. And our understanding that it's only going to be supplying the existing dealership, the traffic then goes all to the right when they come out towards Crestwood. So again, that's what I said earlier about, in sorting this out, we are under the impression that it is not for customers to come to this property, and the traffic assessment reflects
All right.
And I'm getting a nod up and down from both Ryan and Jim. So again, you can ask the applicant to be sure that what I'm saying is correct.
Okay. Everybody good? Ms. Davis, please.
In changing the zoning to C three, would they not be at liberty?
Get closer to your mic, please. Yeah.
They not be at liberty to put other things in there that's under C three, or do they have to come back to the planning and zoning?
Well, our typical binding element on this, if we were to consider recommending to the city of Crestwood, is that it only applies to the plan that was presented today. So if they were going to change it, they'd have to come back to another public.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
The changes from C one to C three in the two documents that we have in our packets here, there are two other parcels. Are those, those aren't part of it, but in the second page, it looks like that's being changed to C three as well? Is that? There are two parcels. There are two parcels, and then in the second one, they are also red in the C three? These two right here?
So I believe the one he's referring to is this one?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's the future land use map. So that's just showing that the future land use from twenty nineteen, when they did the future land use, said that that would be commercial. But it just says commercial.
Commercial, it's not C one or, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't give a specific.
Okay, so those would remain C one, and we're just talking about the two parcels?
Yeah, you're just looking at sixty-two twenty-nine and sixty-two thirty-five. The seven point nine five acres there.
All right. Anyone else? All right. At this time, we'll move into presentation from the applicant. Mr. Ashburner?
Good morning, members of the commission. I'm Cliff Ashburn with Dinsmore &amp; Shoal, one oh one South Fifth Street, Louisville four zero two zero two.
Do you want to go ahead and get your team sworn?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have with me from Land Design and Development, Eric Sen and Mike Hill. Mike will come up and talk about the plan. Eric is really here to support any technical comments specifically having to do with drainage. I know that was a concern raised by the staff from the very beginning of the case and something that I think we've done it, or really Eric has done a good job of addressing on the development plan. So this is the location of the main dealership, Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram Glen there. It is right in the heart of Crestwood, and it is unfortunately landlocked. You can see there's a railroad to the rear, you've got Veterans on the north, one forty-six, and then other developed properties to the south. In spite of that, in spite of its relatively small size and its location in Crestwood, it is the highest volume Jeep dealership in the Louisville region. They sell more new vehicles out of that dealership than any other Jeep dealership in the region. And so what we're, what they have spent the last probably two years doing is trying to find another location to store and prepare new vehicles as they come to the property. If you were to go to, let's say, an unconstrained dealership, a newly built dealership that doesn't have some of the site constraints that this has, you would find the functions that we're talking about here on the same site. If you go to, you know, I'm just thinking of one that's closer to my office, like Oxmoor Toyota, very large property, it has all of these functions in one location. Glen, unfortunately, because of the volume that it's doing, really can't have all of these functions, or is having difficulty maintaining all these functions on its existing site, and so would like the opportunity to store inventory and condition inventory on the property and to allow for, I guess, ease of use, because this lot will be less than a mile away from the main dealership. Now, to clarify a few things, the justification statement, obviously, is something that we filed at the beginning of the case. We clarified with our client on multiple occasions that customers will not be visiting the site. This is designed to be like, if you want to think of it as a back office for the dealership itself. If you were to come there, as you all may know, if you've recently bought a car, a lot of the car buying experience now happens before you ever get to the dealership. So you may look at a vehicle, you may determine the trim level that you like, and then look for dealerships that have that vehicle, and then go to the, or either start negotiating a deal before you get to the dealership, or maybe go to the dealership for a test drive and then negotiate it there. All of that traditional sales work will occur at the dealership property. So if you are, if you decide, I've got the Grand Cherokee that I want, I know that Glen has it, you show up, you're going to do your paperwork there, all of that is going to occur on the main dealership property. The Grand Cherokee that you are purchasing may be sitting on this property until right before you get there, but the main part of the sales is going to continue to occur at the dealership. So I want to run just through a couple of other slides, and I'm going to ask Mike Hill to come up and talk about the development plan. I recognize this is a little bit of an unusual case for the commission in the sense that it's a use that's not directly contemplated by the zoning ordinance. I do appreciate Jim and Ryan and Jim's work guiding us to C three and think that that is the appropriate zoning district. So here, you, well, I guess you can, no, my mouse is not going to work either. At the top of the page, this was really just to show you the distance between the dealership and the location. The parcel that's noted twenty-three zero 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 twenty-five A and twenty-five N, just to the north of it, that's the property we're talking about tonight, or today, sorry. Had a hearing last night, too. And the dealership is noted with that light blue square there. It's right at the intersection of La Grange and Veterans. So less than a mile away from the property. One thing that was mentioned in Ryan's comments, C three not being appropriate for uses that have heavy truck traffic. So we anticipate one delivery per day to the dealership. Most often, that occurs at the main dealership location. And the reason for that, as you all can imagine, if you've got eight cars, the average price of a new car right now is forty thousand dollars. Many of these Jeeps are going to exceed that price pretty significantly, so when those vehicles get delivered from the manufacturer to the property, they're inspected on the property before they're accepted. And those inspections occur at the main dealership property as well. At that point, the vehicles will probably be driven over to the storage lot to be conditioned for sale. This is the proposed development in context. So you can see Crestwood Station to the north, large parking area, larger commercial buildings. You've got H&R Block there. We do have on Camden Acres those residences that back up to the subject property. And a significant portion of the subject property is going to remain treed and/or available for the detention basin that Eric can talk a little bit about later. There is a single building in the middle of the site. It has four bay doors in the back in which cars would be pulled in, as I said, worked on, cleaned up, made ready for sale, and then transported back to the dealership. The normal hours of operation for the use are eight to five. That's when employees will be on the property, working to get those cars ready. The site is proposed to be annexed into Crestwood. You can see we are kind of in the donut hole, almost completely surrounded by Crestwood, and we have consents for those annexations and anticipate going there. The site is mapped as future commercial. Ryan mentioned that in his comments. One thing that I did want to point out, you know, C one is, you know, the existing zone would allow, it would allow retail buildings up to fifty thousand square feet, it would allow restaurants, it would allow many uses that would probably generate more traffic at peak hour and probably generate more activity to the site than the proposed use. So we think that the proposed use could actually be a step down in intensity, even though we are asking for the zone to be changed. And before Mike gets up to talk about the plan, one thing I want to note that's a little bit unusual, the commercial zoning districts here, the yard requirements are actually imported from the surrounding residential zones. And so instead of having a given yard requirement between, let's say, the parking area and a property line that is unique to the zoning district, what our zoning ordinance does here is look to the surrounding uses, look at the yard requirements for those uses, and so that's what's been incorporated in the plan. But with that, I'd like to ask Mike Hill to come up and kind of walk through the design.
Thank you, Cliff. Mike Hill, Land Design and Development, five oh three Washburn Avenue, Louisville four oh two two two. So as Cliff mentioned, our site is approximately eight acres, made up of two parcels currently commercially zoned. We have designed the site to include a single structure for the detailing and reconditioning of vehicles. I think it's eleven thousand eight hundred square feet. It has overhead doors on the rear and as well as the north and the south sides of the building for easy maneuverability of vehicles in and out of the site, or in and out of the building. There's one access point on one forty-six, as shown on the plan. We have discussed preliminarily the location of that with KTC, and preliminarily, they're acceptable of our location point. acceptable of our location point, but of course, if we get zoning approvals, we'll go through the full construction process that requires further discussion with KTC regarding encroachment permit, making sure site distance is appropriate, et cetera. The parking spaces that we're showing, there are 25, I believe, employee-focused parking spaces to accommodate the staff that comes to the site. The remainder of the spaces, I believe it's 393, are intended for potential vehicle storage as the business model, you know, includes or requires temporary storage of various vehicles that come onto the property and then are moved over to the main dealership location. The screening and buffering, we've kept our development to the, as far to the east as you're looking at the plan as possible, and retained the area, the green space to the rear of the site, which is closer to the off-site lake intentionally. The property falls in that direction, so what we've done is kept our pavement and building as far to the east, up the hill toward the road as possible. To the south, we have buffer adjacent to the homes that are fronted on Camden, Camden Station, Camden Acres Drive, excuse me. There is a 25-foot setback area between our pavement edge and the rear property line, and then there's a distance, you know, between the property line and their location of their homes. But within that 25 feet, we're proposing a 15-foot landscape buffer that's required by the Land Development Code. We intend, within that buffer, to preserve as many of the mature existing trees as possible, but in addition, going above that, the next 10-foot strip adjacent to our parking lot. Is that working? No, zoomed in shot. I would point if I had a pointer, but. That's all right. But anyway, on the south side, our buffer consists of a 15-foot landscape strip with tree preservation, and then an additional 10-foot strip that's directly adjacent to our proposed pavement that will be meeting the screening requirements of Land Development Code, which is a mixture of evergreens and deciduous trees to create a solid six-foot-plus screen in that location adjacent to those R2-zoned homes. The property in the corner that kind of makes a notch in our site there, the C1 Smith property adjacent to 146, it's used residentially, but it's zoned commercially, so it has different requirements there as far as buffering. But just to offer additional screening for that neighbor, we are proposing to follow, or to, excuse me, to continue our row of evergreens and deciduous trees to provide a screen on their west and north property lines. You can see on the rendering. Toward the back of the site, where, with the exceptions of where we're going to install the basin and sewer line extension, the remainder of the site, we intend to preserve as many of the mature trees and vegetation as possible. We did have to get a sewer easement across an adjacent property, which is just to the west, to the left off the screen there. You can see that green line, that's our sewer extension. So, we met with the neighbor and came to an agreement with a temporary, excuse me, a sewer easement through their site out to the street that fronts the neighborhood. Detention, just generally, it's captured. Stormwater will be captured with a series of pipes and catch basins through the parking lot, directed toward the basin in the rear. That was mentioned, will be overdetaining to go above the minimum requirements, as mentioned by Mr. Silliman. We're also providing sediment basin, sediment control features within that basin to help, you know, prohibit any negative sediment runoff during and after construction as well. Additional plantings throughout the parking lot and the required landscape islands. No variances or waivers were triggered by our development plan.
You're kind of getting too quiet.
Sure. I'm toward the end of my talk, anyway. Eric, did you want to talk about detention a little more?
Eric Sen, Land Design and Development, 503 Washburn Avenue, Louisville 40222. As mentioned, we heard the concerns about the pond downstream of us, so what we have agreed to is overdetain by 20%. So what that'll do is that'll help decrease the peak flows going to that pond. In addition to that, we've also added a temporary, what we call a four-bay, within that basin. What that'll do, that is almost like a treatment train. Well, that'll help capture the first flush debris and sediment from that, coming from the site, and then actually has to go through two separate structures to be able to get to the pond, so that will help clean that water even more before it actually gets to the pond side. We knew that was a concern, so we tried to address it that way.
Thanks, Mike and Eric. A couple of other just points I want to make. We, I did read the letter that came in a little bit late, and I think maybe one person who had signed the end of the letter, not the author, had appeared at our community meeting, but we covered some of the topics that were raised in the letter at the community meeting. And what we heard from the adjacent residential owners is the concern about buffering, which Mike just explained to you, the kind of, the planting ideas and the distance that's going to be included in there, concern about hours of operation, which I previously stated would be eight to five for the employees on the property, and then concern about lighting. And, you know, our, again, our zoning ordinance does a very good job and has very detailed kind of prescriptive requirements when it comes to lighting adjacent to residential properties. And so, among those requirements, which we fully intend to comply with, we're not seeking a waiver of any kind, and as Ryan mentioned, we'll have to bring a lighting plan back, a photometric plan backed for approval by the staff. Some of the items that I think you all may be aware of, but I'm not sure everybody in the room is, so the maximum height of any light standard is 14 feet. That's within any area that's 75 feet, within 75 feet of residential property. If you are within that 75 feet, you are also required to shield the standard itself, so not only have a downward-facing light, but actually provide physical shielding on the residential side of that light fixture. There is also a light spill maximum, so if you are adding new lighting to an area, and obviously this site is currently undeveloped, and so we would be adding new lighting there, you're not allowed to exceed a light level of .5-foot candles at the property line. So .5-foot candles is, it's kind of just what it says. It's the light that would come off half a candle a foot away from you, so it's a very low light level. In addition to that, and this is something that is, I will say, more stringent here in Oldham County than some of the surrounding counties, there is a requirement that security, that lighting at a commercial facility adjacent to residential go to security level one hour after the property closes. So, we're allowed to continue to light the property, and as we mentioned, there will be cars stored here, and so security is a concern, but the lighting has to be dimmed within one hour of that, of the property closing. So, those, I think, are all things that addressed concerns that were raised at the community meeting and are already included in the zoning ordinance. With regard to the traffic assessment, you know, the traffic assessment was based off of the nearest kind of analogous uses, which was auto sales and auto service. As I mentioned before, this site is intended to be, for lack of a better term, the back office. It is not intended to be a place where customers arrive. You will not be able to come here and get your oil changed, anything like that, so the amount of traffic that's really going to be generated here is much, much lower than a customer-facing automobile service or customer-facing auto wash. With that, I think our team is happy to ask questions. We think that the applicant has done a good job with the design. It's a longstanding Crestwood business that is unfortunately kind of a victim of its own success and would like to remain in Crestwood, but would like to move some of these back-office functions to a nearby site. We have tried to address comments from the staff by overdetaining, by providing for water quality as well as water quantity measures on the property, and obviously, the proposed use meets the future land use map as part of the comprehensive plan. So, we're happy to take questions, Mr. Chairman, if that's appropriate this time.
We'll come to that in a few. Thank you, Mr. Ashburner. All right. Anyone else here wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please, this is speaking in favor. We'll get your name and address for the record, and then get you sworn in.
Elaine Adams, 5915 Camden Acres Drive in Crestwood, Kentucky.
And, one sec.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay.
The purpose of me coming up and speaking is that several of the residents on Camden Acres Drive, we have talked to. Some of them are here, some of them can't make it because of jobs. We are in favor of the development, but we do have, we have previously stated concerns, one being the lighting, and they apparently are going to address that. The second thing is, was the water runoff. I live where the little notch is towards the back of the property. I do have one concern that I didn't hear mentioned. We have all of the properties from the beginning of the subdivision on 146 that come down. The back part of those properties all run through the back of our lot, which is a natural drain for the runoff from storms. In previous hearings that I have been involved in with Crestwood Station, we had the Corps of Engineers come in, and that is considered a natural drain through our, the back of our property that goes into the lake. So I'm hoping that the screening and everything will not affect that natural drain that comes through the back of our property, because if it would, that would cause some damage to my property. So I'm hoping that they have already looked at that and know that that's aware, you know, that that might be a problem. The other thing is, and I've talked to them about this in our previous meetings that we've gone to, which I've attended all of them, that I'm aware of, anyway, was the traffic situation going in and out of the property. As I stated on our previous meetings, Camden Acres Drive, I've lived there 50 years, and up until probably 15 years ago, every resident that lived on that street had one member of their family involved in an accident, either trying to turn out of our street or turn, you know, in or out, including one of my own children. We have contacted the Department of Highway requesting that they lower the speed limit. It's 45 there, and unfortunately, most drivers, when it's posted 45, they go 55. It's even on Interstate 71, they do the same thing. My concern is, is where this entrance in and out is, there is a curve of 146. The sighting for that curve, you can sit at the end of our street and try to make a left-hand turn out of there. You can look left, you can look right, think you're clear, go to pull out, and there's someone flying around the curve, and they're going more than 45. My request is that they do something to alleviate the property that they're trying to develop because of the traffic going in and out of there. It's going to create a hazard, in my opinion. The traffic speed limit, I think, should be reduced. I don't know that your committee is the ones that I need to address this to. I, myself, personally, has called the Department of Transportation for Kentucky requesting, but I really feel like that that needs to be addressed also.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present wishing to speak in favor of the application? All right, very well. We will move into questions and testimonies by those in opposition to the application. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application or have questions? Seeing none, Mr. Ashburner, or, excuse me, we will move into questions from the, or questioning by the commission, right? Mr. Hampton.
For the applicant. What are you doing now for all this? Where is it? What are you doing? How are you handling it now?
Right now, what's happening is they're either being told they've got to stay with the manufacturer, so there's, they're stacking up on the property, kind of parking them wherever they can, or they're just not accepting vehicles, and they're trying to time it out with the supply from the manufacturer.
Okay. And one more thing, and it may be more for staff, but can I do that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is there a difference on the zoning? I hear this doesn't quite fit into anything. Is there a difference between parking and storage?
They've used the word "storage" regularly in their presentation, and really, it is, it's not storing it like you would see the Ford trucks being parked all over the place for extended periods of time. This is parking it for the purpose of conditioning it for delivery when it's sold. So it is some inventory, and it does act a little bit like auto sales from the inventory perspective, but I, you know, I think, again, they keep using storage.
I understand the conversation, but they're the ones using storage.
Right, right. But I'm explaining that, to me, it doesn't matter. It's the function of the site, and the site, as they're proposing it, is for conditioning of vehicles. You're obviously going to have vehicles sitting there, whether it's for sale or whether it's for conditioning.
I'm sorry, but that didn't really answer my question, I don't think.
Well, I don't know how else to answer it. I don't, I, I, I'm going to answer it this way.
Is there a difference?
No.
There is no difference in the?
I don't, I don't know how to define a difference. I really don't.
Mr. Hampton, I think that's conditioned on the context. So if the inventory is a vehicle, then no, but this is not like storing bulk goods or something along those lines. This is storing inventory that is vehicles, so it's a little bit of both, and it's a little bit gray, but I don't know if that helps you, but.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's really, what is, what, you know, the, putting the vehicles on the property, for me, is somewhat secondary in the land use. The primary use is conditioning of the vehicles. They're going to put them inside the building, and if they're only selling 100, they're not going to have 300 cars parked out there, I would assume. They're going to, the primary purpose for developing this property is to condition the building, condition the vehicles for sale.
Another question for applicant. I know it's in here, but I don't have it right in front of me. So that being the case, I see a lot of spots there. How many spots are there for?
If you don't mind, I'm going to ask Mike Hill to come up with.
393, according to their.
I would like to make just one comment on parking versus storage once the answers.
Okay.
Sure. On our plan, we're showing parking spaces, 25 spaces. Those are to be used by employees, et cetera, around the building. In addition to that, we're showing 393 vehicle spaces.
Okay.
So physically on the site, it's been designed like a parking lot. So the landscape islands that are required in a parking lot are included. I don't think that, to a layperson, you know, I always kind of think about a given development or think about the land or the zoning ordinance as if I was unaware of the zoning ordinance, what am I going to see? If I'm standing at the front of this property, what am I going to see? It's going to look like a large parking area. I think the distinction, in my mind, between parking and storage is a parking area anticipates a greater. parking and storage is a parking area anticipates a greater rate of turnover and anticipates that the public will be visiting a particular location and needs a place to store their car temporarily while they're in the location. Storage is more controlled by a single entity, the owner of all the vehicles. But I think that is a distinction, in this case, it's kind of without a difference, because physically, the site has been designed as a, as a parking lot, and includes all of the design requirements of a parking lot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll get to you in a minute, Mr. Douglas. I have Ms. Nasser.
So a little more clarification that might answer some of this storage question. How many vehicles can be conditioned in a day, or expect to be conditioned in a day?
I may have to contact my client. I apologize. Nathan Stahl is the operating partner of Glenn. His wife is pregnant, and they had a medical appointment that he was not allowed-
Can you speak up a little bit?
I'm sorry. Nathan was not able to be physically present today because of a family medical issue, namely his wife's pregnancy. So he is available by text. I can, I will try to get that answer for you, but maybe we can move on to another question that I know I can answer.
Okay.
Ms. Nasser, anything else?
Yes. So of those 393 vehicle spots, what is the estimate of how many of those would be filled, would be occupied daily?
I mean, that really depends on the flow of sales out of the dealership.
Right.
Obviously, they are not going to, let's, let's just assume that the development is approved and constructed. They're not going to move 300 cars onto the site immediately. Over time, it will build up in inventory, but I think that it, what this does is give them more flexibility. So I don't have a specific number for you. We do know that 25 of the spaces are for employees who are working on the vehicles, but I would not anticipate that it'll fill out immediately. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Nasser?
Nope.
Mr. Finney.
I have a couple of questions. Number one, what is the pavement type for the parking area? Is this going to be gravel, asphalt?
It'll be asphalt.
Okay.
Yeah. There was, there was some concern about that earlier in the case. We clarified that with the client. It will be asphalt. Again, these are all new cars, so-
Okay, so we're looking at impervious surface, huh?
Correct.
Okay. And then the next thing is, we're talking about a lot of value here. What security for this area, what's going to be, is this going to be half-fenced, gated?
There will be, so there will be security fencing around the bulk of the site. There will be cameras also located on the site. As I mentioned before, there's lighting to eliminate the vehicles. That will be dimmed at night, but not turned off. And, you know, there will be a gate somewhere in the site. I'm not exactly sure the depth of that gate, though. I think some of the, some of the storage will be outside of the gate, just to allow vehicles to get off of 146.
Not concerned with any theft problems?
I think every car dealer, new, used, urban, rural, is concerned about theft. And I'm sure that Glenn has already had to deal with that, which is why the cameras, why the fencing. I know, you know, of another person I know who owns a car dealership in Louisville who had a car driven out of a building. They broke into the building, took an $80,000 Hellcat Charger. So that, that's a thing that happens. It is unfortunate, but I think Glenn is already working to try to deal with that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Finney, Mr. Douglas, get back to you.
Yes. I have one question. Are these vehicles going to be stored just for the Crestwood dealership or for other dealerships?
Just for the Crestwood dealership.
Pardon me?
Just for the Crestwood dealership.
Thank you.
And I did get the answer, five to 10 vehicles per day would be prepped. All right, Mr. Douglas, you're up.
Just to address, and I know Mr. Finney already asked about the security, and that was one of my questions, because I believe the lady back here, some of the people were asking. The auto detailing and conditioning that must be done, I heard somebody say that to be used cars brought in for those conditioning. Does that include engine steaming, cleaning the engines, washing them down to make them look new again, like most of them do?
I would expect that, but I need to confirm that with my client, yeah.
And I noticed, noted that you said there was no mechanical issues being done there.
Mm-hmm.
The chemical runoffs from the car washing, the waxing, engine cleaning, whatever the case may be, what are you doing to capture that?
Sure.
Capturing the antifreeze, because I heard somebody say they have a pond in the back?
Most of that work will be, be done within the building, and everything within the building drains to MSD sewers. So any kind of steam cleaning, anything like that, that'd be, the detailing would be within the building, which would go directly into MSD sanitary sewer.
They probably wouldn't like that, would they?
That'd have to be permitted, though, right? I mean, in order to do that-
Yes, that'd be permitted. That's part of MSD's industrial waste disposal system.
Right. Okay. And then I know, just briefly, Mr. Finney mentioned about the security issue, about the high fence, whatever. So you're telling me it, after hours?
Mm-hmm.
John Smith from City of Crestwood, or whoever it may be, LaGrange, decides they want to drive through there and stop and get out and look at three or four different vehicles. Are they going to be allowed in there?
No. No, they will not be allowed to do that.
How do you stop it? Gate it?
As I mentioned, I think there's, there is a gate planned, a little bit off of the main entranceway. So yeah, it would be, again, this is not designed to be a public-facing auto use. This is designed as, you know, kind of an accessory to the main dealership.
And then last, I believe that Ms. Adams also discussed about the line of sight, the triangle sight coming out onto 146 of LaGrange Road. Is most of the line of sight caused by the tree lines that are overhanging on the right-of-way, or will they be cleaned up, or what?
I think that is, I think that is the case, and Mike and I were just looking at that while Ms. Davis was speaking. So along the frontage of this property, as you can see, there will be landscaping installed, but that is shrubs and deciduous trees, which should not create, should not get overgrown and create that problem. We think that we can improve this frontage here, but, I don't know if I've got, if you look, okay, this is a good map here. So if you go from the subject property, obviously where the map is, and you work your way south to Camden Acres, I think at least part of the site distance problem actually exists off-site, right at the corner of Camden Acres and 146. I don't know if those trees are in the right-of-way on a private property, but that, to me, when I was trying to identify kind of where that site distance sort of choke point would be, looked to be that location. We, obviously, on the subject property, it's going to be cleared, it's going to be cleaned up, but I don't know that there's anything we can do about that corner, certainly not outside of the right-of-way.
Right. And then the last question is for the engineer. It was briefly discussed about the impervious surface. You're at 55%, which your max is, what, 60%?
What was the question again?
The impervious, impervious surface percentage.
Okay.
Are you at 55%? Is that what it is, based on the parking spaces and your total building size and the total amount of property you have, the square footage?
Yes, yes. Close impervious, 55%. Yes.
And you're not to exceed, what, 60% impervious? 65? Is there any future proposals being developed for any additional property nearby?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right. Mr. Douglas, anything else?
Nope.
Mr. Marsh, you're up.
This facility is to be used to store vehicles for the dealership.
Yeah.
Are they going to receive from large, traffic-heavy truck, you know, the piggyback trailers? Are they going to be receiving vehicles there?
No. I clarified that with the client while we were talking as well. The receipt of vehicles is going to continue to occur at the dealership, and that's because of the inspection that gets done.
Okay.
So most, I would, I can't say that a truck will never come to the site, but the business plan is they continue to receive at the dealership, they inspect all the cars as they come off, and then those cars would be driven over to the lot.
Individually.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Marsh?
No, thank you.
All right. Ms. Jones?
I just wanted clarification on my earlier question where Mr. Stahl stated that, that buyers might be taken there to look at inventory if there's not inventory at the main. That's right here on the neighborhood meeting minutes.
Right. So the question was asked, would that ever happen? If there was a used car that was stored there, the, Nathan did say, you know, it's a very unlikely scenario, but if there was a used car that was stored there, the salesman might drive somebody over to look at the car. Again, the sale of the vehicle will occur at the dealership. I do not anticipate, sorry, and is always designed to occur at the dealership. So if somebody is coming in, hey, I want to buy that, I don't know, 2020 Volvo that somebody traded in, they would bring that car to the main dealership. I, I think Mr. Stahl was trying to be honest and saying that, look, if there's a really particularly busy time, as you all may know from going to any car dealership, if you've bought a car recently, I mean, they're pretty persistent, and they want to make sure that you don't drive home in the vehicle you drove there in. And so, you know, yes, somebody might drive down there, but this site, as I've said over and over again, is designed to be the back office for the dealership. All of the sales activity is occurring at the dealership itself.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
One more thing. The adjoining homeowner that had some, a couple other questions, are those addressed? One in particular, I don't, I don't think that we can deal with the speed limit, but is there somewhere that she could, it does seem like a busy area for, and you're adding more traffic for still a 45 speed limit. Is there somewhere she should go to address that, or?
Mr. Urban, do you, what are the normal recommendations for speed limit concerns? Do we send them to the police department, to the highway department? Mr. Silliman, please.
Yeah, this was brought up at the TRC meeting, and we reached out to, I don't have my email correspondence from that, but we did reach out to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. Mr. Urban pointed out that there have been several speed studies done on that route over the past several years, so they're aware of it, and I just don't remember where it was taken, but it's through the Transportation Cabinet. I think she said she mentioned or brought that up to them already.
Right. They look at the design speed of the roadway, and then they do actual speed study on vehicles, and if they don't exceed a certain amount, if they fall within some tolerance, and I can't remember what it is-
She's using the 85th percentile?
Eighty, yeah. Then they determine that the posted speed is accurate. And I think that's what happened when they reached out to the cabinet in the past. If they've gone out and looked, they've said, it's posted appropriately. And we've had a number of locations across the county. They do the same thing with traffic signal warrants and all that. It's all by a manual.
Right. And often, they do, they do request that, the Transportation Cabinet requests that the requests come from the county, either the judge executive or one of our offices, and we'll coordinate to get that if they want to have it done.
Thank you. Mr. Ashburner, go ahead, Mr. Fisher, I'm sorry.
I was just going to piggyback on Jim's comments. So Ms. Adams did bring these up at TRC. Mr. Silliman did email the state and attach me on that email. I also emailed Chief Smith as well, as I told Ms. Adams at that meeting that I would, and he said they're well aware of the speeding problems, but that they would, you know, definitely look at doing enforcement in that area as well. So just so you know that we did, we did email both parties about that, as we stated at TRC.
Thank you. And there was one specific question about routing of drainage. Thank you.
That's why I'm here. Yeah, so any drainage that comes off-site onto our site, will we either pick up in a separate drainage system or pick it up in a system that goes to our basin? But either way, we won't be blocking drainage coming from off-site onto us, so there shouldn't be drainage backing up onto our adjacent properties.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Ashburner, without opposition testimony, we're going to dispense with rebuttal. We'll move into-
Well, there was comment, you might ask if anybody has any, I mean, even though she was in favor of the question, so.
Any additional, Ms. Adams, anything additional? Anything additional from you? Thank you. All right, good. All right. Final statement? As always, I appreciate the detailed review that the planning commission provides to applications that come before you, before making a recommendation. As we, I think, have demonstrated to you, the site design and the use actually work well in this location. We think that the traffic impact will be minimal. The buffers exceed requirements. The lighting plan will be part of any approval, the landscape plan will be part of any approval by staff, and so it will get a second look before anything is constructed. And the comprehensive plan recommends that the site be used commercially. C1, as I mentioned before, does contain uses that have the potential for more intensity. As I mentioned, retail buildings up to 50,000 square feet, restaurants, daycare centers, and the like, things that may be more useful on a daily basis to consumers, but would certainly have potentially greater impacts on those surrounding the property. And so I would ask that you recommend favorably to the City of Crestwood, the zone change from C1 to C3. As a reminder, we have not asked for any variances or waivers associated with the proposal, and I believe that Mike and Eric and the folks over at Land Design have taken neighborhood concerns and staff concerns really to heart in the design that you have before you today. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Cliff, can I just ask clarification on the annexation, because we really didn't talk a lot about it. You're, you've already applied to the City of Crestwood?
Yes. We've already submitted all, the property owners have consented to the annexation. We have already forwarded those to the City of Crestwood, and I believe that they can be acted upon, the annexation and action on the recommendation at the same meeting, not simultaneously, but the city would take action on the annexation first and then receive the recommendation and act on the zoning.
There appears to be some consternation about that, but I think what Mr. Ashburn has outlined for you is, is pretty usual. So obviously, if the property is annexed, then it becomes a question for the City of Crestwood. If, for whatever reason, the annexation were to be denied, then obviously, they have it in front of Crestwood on the zone change, but they couldn't proceed on the zone change. They'd have to come back to the fiscal court. Either way, you know, he's making a representation to you that they've asked to be annexed, and under the procedure and under the current situation with the legislature, there is a moratorium on annexation, except when the owner of the property has requested it, so they are in a position to proceed forward.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. All right. Mr. Urban, we're at that point.
Okay. So the question at hand is a recommendation to the City of Crestwood for a zoning map amendment to C, from C1 to C3, and the first decision you have to make is whether that is appropriate or not. We don't attach any binding elements to that discussion. Those are done at the development plan review level. So again, the first consideration is, on page two, there are suggested motions for either approval or denial of a zoning map amendment, and you do need to list and fill in the blanks in your motion, whatever findings you- in your motion, whatever findings you may have regarding your motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Urban. So this is for a recommendation to the City of Crestwood on the zoning map amendment request. Floor is open for motions. Ms. Nassar.
Quiet crew today. I'm going to make a motion to recommend to the City of Crestwood approval of the zoning map amendment change from C1 to C3, based on the fact of the testimony and evidence presented today that this fits within the surrounding commercial use of, of the area and the intended future land use for this area in Crestwood. Based on what was said today of, that, that was presented for the intent of this property.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nassar and Mr. Baxter. Do we have an adequate motion on the floor?
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Davis, thank you. Discussion? Any questions? Being none, we'll move in, Mr. Marsh, did you have something? Okay, we'll move into a roll call vote. Mr. Douglas?
I don't know if that goes into the developmental plan, but you know, I, I noticed that the justification statement by the applicant stated that to park new and used cars to be stored and sold. But we've heard testimony, there's no cars going to be sold there, so do we not enter the justification statement as inaccurate or?
That's a good, good point. It will be clarified if you choose to approve the development plan and binding elements. So I don't know whether that portion of the justification statement, you want to clarify that in the motion or not.
But the applicant also testified, the attorney did, that there could be occasions when the salesman may take the client over there, customer over there to pick up the car, test drive it. I'm assuming that's what he'll do. So I don't know how you limit that when we're going to zoning change to C3. Either allow it or don't allow it.
Well, we could make, if, if you have some concern about it, we can make that as a binding element, that they do not allow customers on the property if they're, if the applicant is in agreement with that. Is the concern, Mr. Douglas, that the, that the justification statement has been adopted as a part of the motion in its entirety?
I believe the justification statement was provided to the, to us as part of the consideration, and I have not heard anyone say that is not adopted.
She, she didn't include the justification statement in her motion. We just, Katie, do you want to put that in the record? Whether or not you stated that the justification statement was part of your recommendation?
Correct, for this.
Or motion?
This motion, the justification statement is not included.
Okay.
All right, any further questions? We'll move into roll call vote. Ms. Edgar?
Ms. Davis.
Mr. Urban, could you restate the motion real quickly? Yes vote, no vote, as you have before?
So we have a, a motion on the floor to approve, recommend, excuse me, thank you, to recommend to the City of Crestwood an approval of the application for a zoning change from C1 to C3.
Any yes vote is for the approval?
Is for the recommendation of that approval.
Thank you.
Okay. Good to go, Ms. Edgar.
Ms. Davis, yes. Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss?
Yes.
Ms. Nassar?
Yes.
Ms. Walzer?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
No.
Mr. Doug, Douglas?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And the motion to recommend approval to the City of Crestwood, approval of the zoning map amendment passes on a vote of 11 to 1. And now move into preliminary plan.
Right, so you have on page three in your staff report, recommended motions for either approval or denial of the development plan. I'm going to ask Mr. Ashburner to pay attention to the binding elements I'm going to list, see if they're in concurrence. If you choose to make a motion to approve, the binding elements would be that the approval applies only to the plan presented at the March 26, 2024 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. The second one is a minor plat application survey must be submitted to staff for review and approval prior to the issuance of any building permits. That's actually for consolidation. Number three is a landscape and lighting plan must be submitted for approval. Number four is there shall be no changes to the plan without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission and Engineers Office, except for landscaping and lighting, which will be reviewed by staff. Number five is the plan must comply with all established federal, state and county ordinances and requirements and comply with all necessary easement restrictions. There's been discussion about the, the use and in the notes there, it says that there will be no extensive repairs or mechanics operating on the site and the building will only be used to detail the vehicles and prepare them for sale. Another one is that, that the, so this would be number seven?
Seven.
The applicant intends to use the development to store, condition and prepare vehicles for sale. I don't know if you all want to include hours of operation. They were stated by the applicant that the hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. I didn't hear whether that was Monday through Friday or not. And I think that's it, unless there were others that I might have missed.
All right, Ms. Jones?
There was one other place, I think it was also in the neighborhood minutes where they said seven, the opening at seven. So is that?
In his testimony today, he said 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. I mean, obviously people are going to, the employees are going to get there earlier, but their general hours of operation.
Okay.
I heard 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Mr. Ashburner's, I don't know if that's correct or not.
We have an affirmative on that. Questions, discussion? All right, seeing none, guys, we will move into opening the floor for a motion, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go for motions here. All right, floor is open. Mr. Finney?
This is a motion to approve and not a recommendation, is that correct?
This is the preliminary plan, correct, yes.
That's correct, yeah.
Want to make sure I had my.
Yeah, if, if the City of Crestwood decided to overturn our recommendation and deny it, then the plan goes away because it wouldn't be in, you know, an approved use of the property under C1.
Okay, so concerning docket PZ 24005, I move to approve the preliminary plan based on testimony presented because it applies with objectives LU 3-1, supporting existing business retention and growth compatible with the adjacent land availability for community, community facilities and services. It applies with LU, objective LU 3-2 and objective B1-1-2, supporting existing business and industry to thrive and grow in Oldham County. It's, the approval is continued on a strict adherence to the binding elements and approval listed above, and those were, I think, seven of those presented here today.
Thank you, Mr. Finney. Mr. Baxter?
Adequate motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor.
Just for clarification, there were eight because it includes the, the hours of operation, so five, six, seven, eight.
Men that be eight.
Thank you, Mr. Finney. We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Mr. Marsh, thank you. Any discussion? We'll move into roll call vote.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Walzer?
Yes.
Ms. Nassar?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And the motion to approve planning of the preliminary plan for docket PZ-24-005 has been approved on a vote of 11 to 1. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ashburner. Mr. Fisher?
I just wanted to, SRC members, don't forget Thursday at 5:00 we'll be meeting. We also have already had applications put in, so see you next month. I believe it's the 23rd maybe, but same time, same place. See you then.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Anyone else? All right?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, we are moved to adjourn. Thank you all.